Please welcome our mayor, Buddy Dyer.
Good afternoon and welcome to the November 4th, 2013 regularly scheduled meeting of the Orlando City Council. We're going to begin today's proceedings with the invocation offered by Father Roger Hamilton of St. Michael's Episcopal Church in College Park. Father Hamilton has been the rector at St. Michael's for the past 15 years and the church is one of my favorite College Park neighbors being catty-corner across from my home. It was founded in 1948 by College Park Episcopalians who thought it was too far to go to the cathedral downtown or to All Saints in Winter Park. Think about that.
Yeah.
Since its founding, St. Michael's has been involved in outreach in College Park, City of Orlando, our nation, and foreign countries. Among the many outreach ministries St. Michael's supports are St. Damien's House, Christian Service Center, Coalition for the Homeless, Healthcare Center for the Homeless, Hubbard House, Ronald McDonald House, as well as ministries in Haiti, Honduras, and Uganda. Father Hamilton's invocation will be followed today by the Pledge of Allegiance. Hmm, supposed to be led by Commissioner Ings. Is he on the phone?
I believe he is.
Commissioner Ings, are you there?
I can hear you.
I can, but I'm going to give you the responsibility of leading the pledge today
Here.
Mayor Dyer?
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay, let's take up the minutes from the workshop agenda review and city council to Commissioner Gray and you can have it at the next meeting, Commissioner, okay? meeting minutes of October 21st, 2013.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, if we could all please stand for the invocation.
Some of them.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan to approve the minutes. Second by Commissioner Lyman, all in favor. The motion indicates so by saying aye.
Let us pray.
Aye. Aye. Those opposed, so the motion carries.
We pray, O Lord, for all those in our community who are responsible for our civic welfare,
Right into awards, presentations, and recognition, and I'm going to go off script and do a recognition.
health, and security.
There are a number of the members of the audience here that are part of the University
May your Holy Spirits who guide the mayor and council of this fair city, that they may
of Central Florida Student Government that visits us a couple times a year.
share in your special gifts of wisdom and understanding, of counsel and strength, of
I'm pleased to have had the opportunity to speak with them a little while between lunch
imagination and courage, that upholding what is right and following what is true, they
and before this meeting, and we are proud that you're here. We're proud of your university and we're proud of the partnerships that we have created
may always obey your will and fulfill your purpose for the good of all.
with the University of Central Florida.
This we pray, in your most precious and holy name.
If you guys would all stand and be recognized, please. Now, I'll mention that the University of Central Florida Knights are playing Houston
Amen.
Amen. Our pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for this weekend, and the last real encounter that would lead to them going to a BCS Bowl all. Thank you, Father, for being here. this year, so go Knights this coming Saturday. Madam Clerk, would you, let me call the meeting to order, and would you call the All right, let's go to the ones that are actually on the agenda, so I want to call role-making termina nation of quorum, please? on Richard Forbes, who will be recognizing the winners of our Historic Preservation Board
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
2014 Calendar Photography Image Contest.
Commissioner Stewart?
Here.
Commissioner Sheehan?
Here.
Commissioner Lyman?
Richard?
Here.
Thank you, Mayor Dyer. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Richard Forbes, Historic Preservation Officer for the city, and the Historic Preservation Board's 2014 calendar photo was once again a great success. Excited to be here, surprised I'm already up here again. It seems like it was just a few months ago that I did this, but it was last year. We're here to thank all of those that submitted photographs for the competition, and we're here to showcase the winners of that competition. The Historic Preservation Board has produced a calendar as an educational tool since 1989, and this is the 19th photo competition. The 2014 Historic Preservation Board calendar celebrates the Rosemere National Register of Historic Districts, Places. This community's rich history is something that all of us here in Orlando have known for years, and now this rich history has been recognized at the national level as well. The district was placed on the National Register a few years ago in 2009. The National Register of Historic Places is the nation's official list of historic places worthy of preservation authorized by the National Historic Preservation Act of 1966. This National Park Service program is part of a national program to coordinate and support public and private efforts to identify, evaluate, and protect America's historic and archaeological resources. The Rosemere Historic District is a small residential neighborhood that was part of the much larger College Park neighborhood before being separated by the construction of the interstate highway system in 1964. Prominent local developer and a senator, Walter Washington Rose, who was a native of Georgia, arrived in Orlando in 1909 as an employee of Western Union, and by 1913 had found his own business selling real estate, insurance, and loans. By 1916, Rose had purchased 40 acres east of downtown Orlando, which he developed into his first subdivision, which was called Rose Arden, which is in our Lake La Sona Historic District. In 1920, Rose turned his interests north of downtown, not very far north, but still north, and in December, Rose drew up the plat for the Rosemere subdivision. As you can see, he was fond of naming his subdivisions after himself, Rose Arden, Rose Meere, and many others that have Rose in front of them. And in this case, he featured college names for some of the streets, such as Yale, Cornell, and Harvard. There are some wonderful architectural styles represented in this small part of what was part of College Park, but they include bungalow, American Four Square, minimal traditional, colonial revival, Dutch colonial revival, Mission, Tudor Revival Ranch, and the modern movement. For the photo competition, as always, the contestants were simply given the boundaries of the district and told to go out and take a great photo. That's when the difficulties come in, because then the publications committee has to do a blind judging of these and pick the best out of them. And there were many wonderful images submitted, and they are out front. You'll have to take a look at all of them. But many thanks to McCoy Federal Credit Union again for being very generous and sponsoring both the calendar and the photo competition. So now it's my pleasure to show you the 13 photos. The cover photo was taken by photographer Gail Peck and shows the minimal traditional style house at 219 East Harvard Street, which was built in 1936. The photo for January was taken by Ronak Nichols, and this image shows the house at 226 East Vanderbilt, which was the home of developer of Rosemere, Senator Walter Rose. He was one of the most active developers in Florida, and this French eclectic home is the most architecturally detailed building in the district. Rose set a trend at the time for combining features of the craftsman style with some of the various revival styles that were popular during that time period. This image for February was captured by Bill Wolfert and shows 220 Harvard. This 1932 house is representative of the American Four Square, which was popular across the country between 1890 and 1935. These were sensible homes that were economical to build and comfortable to live in, and many find aesthetically pleasing. They take their name from the cubic shape and floor plan, which is divided into quarters on each floor. The March photo was taken by Mark Sekman and shows the 1921 bungalow at 300 East Harvard Street. This example has many of the great features typically found in the craftsman homes. In 1928, E.T. Win Jr., who was one of Orlando's first motorcycle policemen, lived here with his wife Louise. The April photo was taken by Kevin Drinon and shows the house at 315 East Vanderbilt. This is the only example of the Mission style here in this part of the neighborhood. The May photo is by Scott Nichols and shows another great bungalow at 209 East Harvard Street. Some of the great craftsman elements of this home are the multi-pane windows, the exposed eve rafters, the battered wood columns on piers, and the distinctive foundation of cast stone blocks. In many cases, these cast stone blocks were actually cast on-site. The 1928 city directory lists S.J. Allen as the resident. Allen was a very important man here, as he was superintendent of the ICE Department for Public Services Commission. The June photo was taken by Mark Sekman and shows the glass block window of 227 East Vanderbilt. This house was built in 1940. Glass block was originally developed in the early 1900s for windows in manufacturing plants, and this became popular in residential architecture from the 1920s through the 40s. The July photo was taken by Bob Eggleston and shows another view of 219 East Harvard. The house was constructed in 1936 for Edward McLeod Sr. and his wife Ruth. McLeod was fruit inspector for the Atlantic Coastline Railroad. The photo selected for the month of August was taken by Penny Sekman and shows the framed vernacular house at 208 East Harvard. This house gets its charm from the arched gable vent and rough shake siding. The September photograph, taken by Janann Wolfert, shows the house at 318 East Yale. This is another framed vernacular style house, and it has classical paired colonial style windows on either side of the entrance with a fan light over the front door. The October photo was taken by Kevin Drinon and shows the American Four Square house at 215 East Yale. The symmetrical front facade features paired double-hung windows with a craftsman pattern. The photo for November is of 217 East Yale Street and was taken by Linda Baumann. This is the only example of the Tudor Revival style in the district, and it was built in And that brings us to December, and this photo was captured by Bob Eggleston and shows some of the Mission revival details at 315 East Vanderbilt Street. We don't know much about him, but this house was built for a man named John Marsh. So, the 2014 calendar shows the rich history of this College Park neighborhood and a reminders of the important role that this area has played in the past and will play in the future. I want to thank all the photographers who submitted their work. The calendars will be available in the rotundive City Hall for the next foreseeable future until we run out, and also at the Orange County History Center and at Lew Gardens. And there are also going to be calendars available on the tables outside as you leave council chambers. Mayor Dyer, it's time now to present the certificates of appreciation, and would the photo contest windows, winners, and Wayne Schnek of McCoy Federal, please come on down, and we'll get you your letters.
Mark Sekman, Mayor. Okay, Marcia, you're up for the next one.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Dyer and city commissioners and everyone who has joined us here today. It is a pleasure to introduce our next presenter, because he and his organization provides such a vital service to our community, and today, as the City of Orlando recognizes Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Day, I would like to bring up someone who we work with consistently on many partnerships, Brent Trotter, the president and CEO of the Coalition for the Homeless.
Mayor Dyer, Commissioners, good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to be with you today. Ms. Brenner? The Coalition for the Homeless is the largest provider of homeless services in all of central Florida, and it's not a secret to any of you that homelessness is a critical issue that faces our community and our region as well. Recent reports of the number of homeless children in our schools could swell the number of homeless children to over 11,000 over the course of a year. And many of these are the hidden and the unseen homeless, living in motels, living with family members, or doubled up in apartments or living in shelters. Every day, we see the newest faces of homelessness, the women and families with children who never thought that they would be walking through the doors of a homeless shelter. But now, they find themselves depending on the Coalition for daily necessities such as food, a safe place to stay, and the needed tools to attain a better life. Our mission is simply stated: to transform lives by providing crucial services. Our Center for Women and Families saw last year over 65% of our clients who engaged in our program for two or more months move to community housing upon exiting the program. Our Women's Residential and Counseling Center saw more than 70% of our clients engaged in their program for two or more months move to community housing. And in our First Steps Transitional Housing Program, which is our substance abuse recovery program, over 65% of our clients engaged in their case management program for two or more months moved into community housing upon exit. It's clear that we would not be able to do what we do without the support of individuals, community organizations, businesses, partner agencies, foundations, and governments like the City of Orlando, who are committed to helping our neighbors in need. We also see the faces of the most underserved of the homeless population, single men, and we are very excited and we anticipate being able to help them as never before when our new Men's Service Center opens very soon. And Mayor, in order to facilitate a renewed awareness this month of hunger and homelessness to that all-too-prevalent, it's all-too-prevalent in central Florida, as we all know how our community can get together, address this critical issue. With the help of community groups, social media, cardboard signs, and the color purple, we're planning Hunger and Homeless Awareness Day activities for Friday, November 22nd. We're asking that the community wear purple, think purple, whatever that means and however you think purple, for those of us who are colorblind, that's not even a possibility, but to take photos of you in purple and post them on your social media, and otherwise help us turn the town purple on November 22nd and shine a light on this very critical and serious issues. We invite the public to follow us on our social media for more details as they become available. Again, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for your longstanding partnership and the support of our work.
Thank you, and I have a proclamation for City of Orlando, whereas each year, the month of November is designated as National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Month, and the week before Thanksgiving, November 16th through 24th, is designated National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. And whereas the Coalition for the Homeless of Central Florida and the City of Orlando are joining with communities across America during that week to bring greater understanding and awareness of the realities of hunger and homelessness, with special activities to take place in the City of Orlando on Friday, November 22nd, 2013. And whereas the City of Orlando and Orange County government have funded the capital construction of the new Men's Service Center, which will open in early 2014, enabling the Coalition to assist homeless men as never before. And whereas on November 22nd, the Lake Yola Fountain and the Amway Center Tower will glow purple, and also the Tower of Light will glow purple. And the community is encouraged to wear the same color to promote awareness of hunger and homelessness, and more importantly, how we can help make a difference in the lives of our neighbors in need. Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim Friday, November 22nd, 2013, as Hunger and Homeless Awareness Day in the City of Orlando. I want to wish our District One Commissioner a happy birthday. He will be celebrating his birthday on Wednesday, November 6th. Commissioner, I hope you have a great day, and you know by now that we have a little tradition of singing "Happy Birthday." So...
Hold your ears. Everybody, hold your ears. (Singing) Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, Commissioner Gray, happy birthday to you.
All right, we have several events planned for Veterans Day to honor our men and women who have served or are serving in our military. This coming Saturday on November 9th, the Mayor's Veterans Advisory Council will host the City of Orlando's 14th Annual Veterans Day Parade to honor the courageous men and women of our armed forces. The parade will begin on Orange Avenue and Robinson Street in downtown Orlando at 11:00 a.m. and make a loop and come back up Roseland. This year, the parade will also tribute the Redtail Pilots of the Tuskegee Airmen. In addition to the parade, we will also honor the Redtail Pilots with a monument dedication ceremony at the Orlando Science Center on Veterans Day, November 11th at 10:00 a.m. And I know that Commissioner Stewart is going to provide some additional information on this event and update you on how the monument was created. And also, on Veterans Day at 11:45, the community is invited to the dedication ceremony for the Central Florida Veterans Memorial Park in Lake Nona. Okay, if you've been paying attention in downtown Orlando, you have noticed some sculptures popping up in and around the downtown, especially around Lake Yola. And two weeks from today, we'll be officially unveiling all eight of the new Sea Art Orlando sculptures, so I invite you to join us on November 18th. Festivities will begin at 5:30 at the Seaside Bank Plaza, and we'll continue with tours around the lake to see the new magnificent art pieces. The last one is being installed today, and it's a very interesting piece over by the band shell. Also, for many of our longtime residents, you'll remember that in 1992, the City of Orlando commissioned the Tower of Light to grace the plaza in front of City Hall, and I have learned that the tower celebrates the intersection of private and public interest in the City of Orlando and is a symbol for the aspirations of our community. Well, since I have been in office, that tower has not been lit, so it has not really been a Tower of Light. And before we sculpted or installed eight new sculptures, I thought it would be very appropriate that we actually fix up and light our one piece of great sculpted art. It was that in mind that the Orlando chapter of the Commercial Real Estate Women reached out with a generous offer to restore the Tower of Light to its original glory, and thank you to the work of crew. The restoration project is just about complete. LED lighting system has already been installed, and a new base is being finalized today and tomorrow. So, next Tuesday, November 12th, at 6:00 p.m. in City Hall Plaza, we will relight the Tower of Light. Okay, just a few items of note from the agenda. So, under, well, there's an agenda item for a $3.5 million contribution from Orlando Food Service Partners, a concessionaire, at the Citrus Bowl in the Amway Center towards the reconstruction of that project, and I'd like to thank the Orlando Food Service Partners for their commitment to improving our central Florida community. I'm also excited about EDV numbers eight and nine, which are employment contracts for two new construction inspectors, which is helps, well, our permitting activity has jumped 73% since 2011, so we're back at 2006, 2007 levels, and that's a good thing for everyone. And then, one little thing, we are, we have on the agenda an agreement for a traffic signal at the intersection of Hazelteen and Golden Rod. And why is that important? Because that is the site of our under-construction Publix Distribution Center, a 1 million square foot frozen food and produce distribution center that represents a nearly $200 million investment in our city and is expected to create over 150 new high-paying jobs. Thank you to Publix for your commitment to our community. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our council members an opportunity to update you on items from their district and comment if need be on items on the consent agenda. We rotate the order in which the council members make their comments, and today, Commissioner Ings, are you there?
I am there.
You're first up. You're a little hard to hear, so you might want to save the bulk of your comments for when you return to the next meeting.
(Laughter).
We're ready for you.
Mayor and Commissioners, I just wanted to let you know that Jim and I are in Israel, and we're a little bit in here, over there in tour, and next year that Jim and I will have time to talk in Israel. So, if there's anything else to talk to you, I've met a lot of people in New York that try to do this in Springfield, so we're going to invite you to come to Old Oakville, and also get a compliment in Bethlehem that has a professional, we have businesses, and we're also going to talk to you. So, this, I have, I have, maybe, you know, to make.
Thank you, Commissioner. How many hours ahead? Are you there? I've forgotten.
(Inaudible).
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for making the effort to attend by telephone. Commissioner Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. Things that are going on in District One, I try to put on my website, both things in the past as well as future, so I would refer you to the city website, District One website for those things. Three items on the agenda I want to speak about. Item B9, the conference center funding. We talked about that at length at the workshop. I am not there yet on this agreement. I'm going to keep an open mind and try to get there, but at this stage, for all the reasons I mentioned this morning, I am going to vote no on B9. But again, I will keep an open mind as we go through the details of the different agreements, because there's still a lot of work to be done. I wanted to mention item F, 1 through 7. This is probably the third or fourth month we've had a lot of different housing grants that our folks in the housing group, Orin Henry leads that up, but Deb Gerard helps a bunch. I just publicly wanted to thank them for the efforts. It's tough. You've got to follow a lot of rules and regs to keep Washington happy, and they seem to be doing a great job, so I wanted to say thank you for your efforts. And finally, item J, 1 and 2, the collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters. Again, I know that takes a lot of...
appropriate that we actually fix up and light our one piece of great sculpted art. With that in mind, the Orlando chapter of the Commercial Real Estate Women reached out with a generous offer to restore the Tower of Light to its original glory, and thank you to the work of crew. The restoration project is just about complete. LED lighting system has already been installed, and a new base is being finalized today and tomorrow. So next Tuesday, November 12, at 6:00 p.m. in City Hall Plaza, we will relight the Tower of Light. Okay, just a few items of note from the agenda. So under, well, there's an agenda item for a $3.5 million contribution from Orlando Food Service Partners, a concessionaire at the Citrus Bowl in the Amway Center towards the reconstruction of that project. And I'd like to thank the Orlando Food Service Partners for their commitment to improving our Central Florida community. I'm also excited about EDV numbers eight and nine, which are employment contracts for two new construction inspectors, which is helps, well, our permitting activity has jumped 73% since 2011, so we're back at 2006, 2007 levels, and that's a good thing for everyone. And then, one little thing, we are, we have on the agenda an agreement for a traffic signal at the intersection of Hazelteen and Goldenrod. And why is that important? Because that is the site of our under-construction Publix Distribution Center, a 1 million-square-foot frozen food and produce distribution center that represents a nearly $200 million investment in our city and is expected to create over 150 new high-paying jobs. Thank you to Publix for your commitment to our community. With that, we will move on to the consent agenda, and the consent agenda is a number of items acted upon through a single vote of council. We give each of our council members an opportunity to update you on items from their district and comment, if need be, on items on the consent agenda. We rotate the order in which the council members make their comments. And today, Commissioner Ings, are you there?
Yeah, I'm there.
You're first up. You're a little hard to hear, so you might want to save the bulk of your comments for when you return to the next meeting.
(laughter)
We're ready for you.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I just wanted to let you know that Jim and I are in Israel, and we're left to begin here, over there in Tor, and next that Jim and I will have time to talk to you. So, if they've been a long time here, I've met a lot of New York, I've talked to them in Springfield, so we're going to invite them to come to Oaxaca. Also, we've got a talent in Bethlehem that has a professional, we have business, and we're also going to talk to them. So, this, I have, I think, maybe, you know, the name.
Thank you, Commissioner. How many hours ahead are you there? I've forgotten.
Uh, there you go. Just one, I'm going to be right now.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for making the effort to attend by telephone. Commissioner Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. Things that are going on in District One, I try to put on my website, both things in the past as well as future, so I would refer you to the city website, District One website, for those things. Three items on the agenda I want to speak about. Item B9, the Conference Center funding. We talked about that at length at the workshop. I am not there yet on this agreement. I'm going to keep an open mind and try to get there, but at this stage, for all the reasons I mentioned this morning, I am going to vote no on B9. But again, I will keep an open mind as we go through the details of the different agreements, because there's still a lot of work to be done. I wanted to mention item F, 1 through 7. This is probably the third or fourth month we've had a lot of different housing grants that our folks in the housing group, Orrin Henry leads that up, but Deb Gerard helps a bunch. I just publicly wanted to thank them for the efforts. It's tough, you've got to follow a lot of rules and regs to keep Washington happy, and they seem to be doing a great job, so I wanted to say thank you for your efforts. And finally, item J, 1 and 2, the collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters. Again, I know that takes a lot of negotiation and give and take, so I wanted to congratulate certainly and thank the firefighters' union and their representatives, along with our staff, for working through those details and coming to agreement. So, Mayor, that's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move on to Commissioner Tony Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Let me start with expressing my deepest condolences to Alicia Ramirez from the Yola Office. She just lost her mother. So, our prayers are with you, Alicia, and I hope everybody keep her on their prayers. Last Saturday, we had our fall cleanup event, thanks to all the volunteers and to Cody Boyas and her team for assisting with the event. We had to cut it short due to rain, but we still gather about 15 bags of trash, which reminds me of the old saying, it's not a matter of picking up the garbage, it's a matter of not throwing it down. For those out there that like to flick their cigarette butts and make our communities a little dirtier, please, please, please put it in your pocket or put it in your ashtray. Our city is not a garbage can. We need to keep it clean. It's the epicenter of the world. District 2 Fall Festival was on October 23. Over 300 people, especially kids, came over. I want to thank the Orlando SWAT team and our firefighters for their great display. Those kids, they just can't have enough, you know? They really loved it. So, thank you so much. I am happy to announce that we are working on the final touches of Park of the Americas Office. We're hoping to begin working out of that office next month, at least twice a week. So, we'll make a final announcement about that. And recently, Mayor Dyer and I laid down the last paver during a dedication ceremony to celebrate the completion of the Seminole Boulevard sidewalk and streetscape improvement project. I want to start thanking God, because this will not be happening without his help, and then we'll go in a descending order here. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you so much for your support, for your assistance. I'd like to thank City Planner, Mr. Bruce Hosfield, City Project Manager, Mr. Jeff Arms, City Chief Planner, Mr. Jason Burton, Ms. Narand Down, District 5 Secretary from Florida Department of Transportation, the Seminole Business Partnership, our Neighborhood Leaders' Council, and all our constituents in District 2. All of those of you that kept us on your prayers. We're moving to Phase 2 and to other plans for the district. So, as Commissioner Gray said, I want to thank the firefighters for coming to an agreement with the city. Those are great thanks, especially in this particular times. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for mentioning the Redtails gum up this weekend. I think we've got a little bit of information, a little thing I want to show on the video, so Ed, roll it. If not, I have to act it out. Okay, I was trying to get to you early, so you-
Now therefore, I, Buddy Dyer, Mayor of the City of Orlando, hereby do proclaim Tuesday, May 7, 2013, as Redtail Pilot Day in the City of Orlando.
And hope they're an example of courage and perseverance will inspire the next generation.
As Redtail Pilot Dr. Roscoe Brown said, "They have a saying that excellence is the antidote to prejudice." So, once you show you can do it, some of the barriers will come down. Thank you for breaking those barriers.
And I said, Colonel, is there anything I can help you with? I'm right here in Orlando, Florida. And Leo looked at me and he said, "You can help me get them on there." I'm glad to say today that we got that monument.
First letter of rejection I got said straight out, "There are no facilities to train Negroes to fly in any branch of the American military service," which ticked me off. I bought it up, threw it away. They didn't want blacks in airplanes. The main thing, they didn't want blacks to command in this white and this department. So, I applied the third time. And I tell all youngsters, and I talk at schools, persevere. When someone tells you you can't do something and you know you can do it, go out and prove them wrong.
Next Monday, a week from today, at 10:00, we'll be having a special ceremony to honor the only Redtail Pilot Monument in the country. It'll be here at the Orlando Science Center. It's a joint project with the History Center, as well as the John, I'm sorry, I'm going to show my age, Orlando Science Center, and Vision of Flight. It's a chance for us to join history and science and technology together to have an incredible impact on our community. I've had a chance to meet some of these guys, and they were here before, and Commissioners, and you should have gotten some invitations about some special events that we're having along the same lines. I certainly hope that you'll get a chance to attend with us. It is, I have the honor of having this in my district, but this is a citywide opportunity for us to share with some genuine heroes. For those who aren't familiar with the Redtails, let you know that Tuskegee Airmen trained about 950 pilots. Only about 325 actually went into combat. The rest flew other support missions throughout the war. These were the pilots that accompanied bombers going into the European Theater and the Asian Theater. There is roughly 32 of these men available, alive today. We will have a gathering of 14 of them here, and they will serve as grand marshals for our Saturday Parade, and it will be the largest gathering of Redtail Pilots since the war. So, we're really thrilled about that. These are just genuine American heroes, and anything we do to honor them is completely, is simply not enough. So, thank you very much for that. Sid Levy has provided the monument. Mike McKenzie from Vision of Flight, and then, of course, we've had a whole host of people, especially the Orlando Science Center that's taken the lead in this. We will start activities and festivities on Friday afternoon. It'll go all the way through Monday, and it'll have features of the Redtail Pilot movie. It'll have history lectures. It was just, it's going to be a great weekend. So, if you're listening and you'd like to attend, just come over to the Science Center, and we'll make sure that you're involved in that. Let me also mention a couple of things briefly, and I won't go too long, but the Orlando Union Rescue Mission will be celebrating their 65th anniversary. I share this because my father is the owner of one of the four men who started the rescue mission 65 years ago. So, it's always been very near and dear to my heart, and they've always been very special to the work of the city. And so, I just am honored to be part of that celebration in memory of my mom and my dad. Next Monday evening, we will be dedicating the Kevin Tyewski Memorial Bridge over in Baldwin Park. If you have a chance to attend, please come and join us. It's a special chance to honor the memory of Kevin Tyewski, who did so much for this city and took on the lead of the Baldwin Park area over there, and just, we're honored that we could remember him in this way. And the last thing I want to share with you briefly before I share some comments on the agenda, is the Ivanhoe Village is going to kick off their event. This will happen between now and our next meeting, so that's why I share it, on November 23 is the Jingle Eve. That evening, we will be unveiling the holiday lights, and many of you know about it. Commissioners, thank you for your support. That will go up in the next couple of days, literally. We'll be doing some testing on it, but on that evening, we'll be displaying that for the first time since 1992, as best we can tell. So, please come out and enjoy it. It's a great chance to support one of our Main Streets, but it's also a great chance to remember a little bit about some of the nostalgia around our city, so please be part of that. One thing, two things I want to mention. First of all, on B9, I understand, Commissioner Gray, some of your concerns, and I think I shared some of mine earlier today. I would love to be able to kind of make sure that we're kind of keeping on task with what I would call outcome measurements, to make sure as we make these investments that we will be able to justify them to those who put us in office. So, I think it's a good investment. I think it's a good, in the heart of the investment, and would love to continue to move down this process to make sure that we have plenty of support documentation to prove that it is. So, that's important to me. I'm supporting that. And then, two I want to mention, I always get a chance to thank our, those from my district who have chosen to serve our community through their volunteer efforts. Justin Ram and Henry Lim both have committed to serving on some additional boards. We'll be reappointing them today, and as I get a chance to say often, this city runs because of the volunteers and the citizens who take leadership to accomplish that task. And I'm honored that they would do that and serve our city so well. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll move to Commissioner Sheen.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned the Tower of Light with the Commercial Real Estate Women. I think that's a wonderful project. And also, they're not only unveiling the new Tower of Light, they're adding sculpture, actually adding mosaics to the bottom of it. Local artist Terry Hummel was hired to do that, so it actually added something special to the Tower of Light, too, by using a local artist. So, I just think that's wonderful, and Terry's one of my dear friends, and I just think it really is a wonderful thing, not only to get that lit, because, yeah, I mean, it's just set there for so long, and it's breathtaking when it's lit. Frank actually did a, Frank Billingsley did a trial run of lighting at once, and it's just breathtaking, so I can't wait to see the new LED lighting. I'm just really excited about that. And thank you so much to Commercial Real Estate Women for leading that and restoring that so beautifully. On the agenda today, on item B9, the Conference Center, I certainly support that. I think it's a $1.7 million investment that's going to, you know, just be a great investment for our CRA money. And, you know, a lot of folks told me that Thornton Park Central, the investment that we made there would not work, and it has certainly worked very, very well in the parking garage, and it's really been a catalyst for that area, and I think this will do the same thing for Paramore. On item C3, the Hampton Inn over on Columbia, it's actually going to have a multi-use trail within the lake maintenance easement. I think that's wonderful. It worked great with Lake Beauty, which we unveiled last year, and I'm really glad to see our public work staff working on, and our planning staff, working on these trails because they become such an amenity, and I'm so glad that Orlando Health has embraced this idea. On item D2 today, the rate structure at Orlando Skate Park, it's a slight decrease in what we're going to be getting, but it's going to make us more competitive with other skateparks in the area. And my hope is to get these kids back in the skatepark and not out gooing graffiti and skating all over everything else. They're not supposed to be skating, so, again, that's a slight reduction to $5 a day, which a lot of the moms in the area say is a bargain, because it gets the kids out of their hair, especially teenagers, gives them a place to go and not get into trouble. Item F2, I'm delighted to see the Community Development Block Grant for Community Food Outreach Center. They do a wonderful job, and congratulations on this award, and I'm glad to see that you all are here today, but you do wonderful, wonderful work in our community. And I'm so glad to see so many organizations. I don't think we do enough to thank the organizations that really do help the poor in this community. Thank you so much for Community Food Outreach. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And we'll move to Commissioner Lyman.
Just a few announcements. We try to keep up with Commissioner Gray in putting things on our website, so thank you for the encouragement. But a few announcements, and tonight, we are having a meeting regarding the Major League Soccer, regarding Central Boulevard drainage, and I think the homeless, Coalition of the Homeless Shelter updates for the community in Paramore. On the agenda items, on agenda item, I think it's B8, regarding those A1 golf carts, can someone talk to me what we're going to do with the Owens? I was hoping maybe if FAMU, College of Law, may need a couple, if theirs are worn out since we know how to recycle things, maybe some of the neighborhood associations can pick up one each, those that want them. And I believe Father Pender, about eight or nine years ago, asked for his neighborhood for one. So, before you throw them away or send them to whoever, let's talk about it, please. And on item B9, I have to tell you why I support that, even though it's $1.7 million investment. It makes sense to me because I've been in Orlando over 42 years, and actually, as a child, lived here with my aunt and my father's side of the family. But one thing I've noticed, especially from Expo Center, we lost a lot of opportunity for conferences downtown, particularly small conferences that impact my community. I remember the African-American Men Have Summit used to be down Expo Center. I remember when Sisters Take Charge of Your Health used to be down there. We now have an opportunity for other smaller conferences. And I know Commissioner Stewart is now involved with Redtails, but I remember, I saw Jonathan come in, we did something every year with the Tuskegee Airmen for 10 years since I've been on this council, but it was at the Rosen Center. So, maybe we can bring them back downtown. And I think it was with the Urban League or whoever, but I know Congresswoman Brown, myself, Representative Reddick, we've worked for many, many, many years with them. So, I'm glad to see someone else get engaged. But these are things we can bring downtown to the conference center, where people live who really want to be a part of it. So, that's one of the reasons why, because we used to have this space, we need some more of this space. Agenda item B9 uses this. I did have a question I meant to ask earlier, and I noticed, and I congratulate our staff for midnight basketball. I know we're funding the Center for Drug-Free Living, and I noticed, and I was informed, that they are no longer funding midnight basketball. It doesn't cost that much money, so however we're doing this, I think we ought to ask them some questions if the funding comes under that. If we're going to do our part, I think the Center for Drug-Free Living ought to do their part for midnight basketball. The other item is H6 under housing. Timber Sound, we're allocating over $681,000. We have really been working with them the past year or so. I am really, really thankful for how we're going to get that done. And of course, oh, we're going to talk tonight, too, about heroes. The six units we're going to do for disabled veterans in Paramore, been working on that a long time with Frankie and Deborah Gerard. I want to compliment you guys for doing a great job with Urban League and all of our partners coming through our Neighborhood Stabilization Fund. So, it's just something to look forward, it's something to congratulate ourselves on, not just, it's not the most obvious things that we do, but sometimes you just have to point them out. So, thank you, and I believe that's all I've got, except to tell Commissioner Ings and his wife to be safe.
Okay, is there a motion to approve? We have approved. Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheen. All in favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye. As opposed. Motion carries. I had Commissioner Ings as a yes vote, so 7-0 show Commissioner Gray no on B9. Okay, we're going to skip the CRA and the NID for just a minute and go on to new business, new business hearings. So, this morning, we had a work session where we had a very detailed presentation on the SED proposal, which related to item B9, as well as the companion agreement, which is on the CRA. Now, we need to hold a public hearing on the disposition and sale of the city property, which is, well, city property that's valued in excess of $500,000, as required by Chapter 13, Section 7 of the City Charter. Notice of the hearing appeared in the Orlando Sentinel on October 30, 2013, and approval of the sale will require a majority vote of all members of the city council. The proposed purchaser is SED Development LLC, and the property, which consists of approximately 7.33 acres, is located west of Huey, east of Division Avenue, south of Central, and north of Church Street. The contract price is $12,712,560.88. At this time, we will hear from, y'all feel like you're pretty up to speed with what we did this morning at the workshop related to this? Okay. Then we will hear from anyone from the public that wishes to speak, and we do have two appearance cards, Nelson Betancourt, and then LaWanna Gelsner. You have five minutes, if you'll state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Nelson Betancourt. I live on 5350 East Kaylee Street, Orlando, Florida, 32812. I've been a resident of Orlando for nearly 30 years. I'm here to register my total opposition to the sale of the piece of land in question to the Orlando Magic or to this development corporation. The Orlando Magic has benefited tremendously from our city and its taxpayers up until now, and to sell them this piece of land, its tantamount to grabbing an incredibly valuable public asset for a song. Enough is enough. Other, more sophisticated cities have undertaken these kinds of initiatives as joint ventures, with the city retaining the property under municipal ownership and negotiating a lease agreement in which the city got a portion of the developers' profits, of the developments' profits, in lieu of property taxes. By some estimates, capturing more than 40% more revenues than it would have collected through conventional property tax channels. Case in point, Boston, in 19- in the, in the 1970s, the Faneuil Hall Marketplace. Six acres of land. Here we have seven acres of land. Not only are you selling an incredibly valuable asset for a lot less than it's worth, you are also depriving this, the residents of Orlando of potential earnings from the project that could be used to, to cross-subsidize other public purposes, such as reasonably-priced, low-income housing, affordable childcare, and the promised development of Paramore. How is it that we don't have in place the infrastructure policies to support the vast potential of the green energy economy projected to surpass $2 trillion by the end of this decade? Why are we not looking at the example of Cleveland, Ohio, where the greenest worker-owned cooperatives in the nation are giving hope and stability to a similar community to Paramore? If the city of Orlando is really serious about becoming one of the greenest cities in the nation, then it would not sell this piece of land and begin a real green initiative in Paramore that could be the jewel of the nation. That, Mr. Mayor, and city commissioners, is a more worthy and important legacy. Thank you for listening.
Luana Gelsor.
Luana Gelsor, 76, 74, St. Stevenson Court, District 6. Good afternoon, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. Why am I here, and why now? I am Paramore. My family moved to Paramore in 1971 because our uncle, my father's uncle, willed us the land. We built a home there. Why now? Why now, after you just recently purchased land for the soccer stadium? Why now is the community still waiting for unkept promises? Why certain organizations or certain businesses are always the beneficiaries of the great city of Orlando, but it's not evenly spread among other companies and other businesses? Prime example, we talk about the CAR, the downtime development. Its boundaries reached to Westmoreland. Several businesses have been there for so many years, it's, it's amazing. My business itself, 35 years. Yet we have to compete against our own tax dollars for the Napfort Charter School. Why now? We have, I have constantly come to the city of Orlando for equal treatment. Instead, I receive political bullying. I will not be intimidated by each and every one of you. Some of you are the most respectful people I have known, and you always speak, but some of you have gone above and beyond to make my life difficult. It will not intimidate me. I am not afraid of you. Proof of protection on October 7th is what I said. And the reason why I'm concerned about it is, I've said it over and over again, and I have the EPA results to prove what I've said all along about the contaminated land in Paramore. You said, "Why is she talking about this now on the, this particular hearing session for the Magic?" The Magic has benefited from the city and its partnerships. I'm asking why not the rest of the residents and the businesses in that community? We're gonna lose a business that's been there for 18-plus years, Mr. Three Mass. I visit it, I utilize it. Why now? I constantly say about the contaminated land, because proof of protection is something I'm concerned of. And when I came to the workshop, you have a gas station at the OPD facility, at the headquarters. The city of Orlando will be responsible for the cleanup based on what I heard. I'm gonna look for additional information to make sure. Why now? My concern is, when were the people of, in Paramore, other than this creative village site, other than the 400 to the 600 block of Robinson, and when it comes to the soccer stadium land purchase, why are we cleaning up those areas and the people in the other contaminated community of Paramore is yet to receive the cleanup or the information? Why is it so difficult that I have to go to the EPA and negate you? I, I don't deal with you anymore, because it's such a headache. But the reason why I'm concerned is, the Magic is a very wealthy organization. They have a magnificent facility. No matter what you said, it's been on the books and you wanted to do, we are still in Paramore waiting for unkept promises. Why can't you take care of the infrastructure? See, you're doing a magnificent job on Church Street, but you go one street over on Central, or one street over on South, and you go between Westmore and Orange Blossom Trail, you're in potholes. If you go down Paramore, you're in potholes. All we're asking for is the equal treatment, just like all the other citizens in the community. See, we're taxpayers, too. We're taxpayers. And so our concern is, why a multimillionaire company? It might be worth billions, but billions. Say they wanna do this in Paramore, we're promised jobs. Oh, now you can't calculate how we're gonna get the jobs. But that's all right. It's economic growth. It's always something. But you, Mayor, when you were first elected, said Paramore was important to you. And what we have seen based on that is, it is important to most people, that 1%, the most richest individuals in the community. And if it was such a magnificent thing, why are we selling it at $12.13 million? $13 million? And why are we in such a rush to sell and have to turn back around and rent it back for $100,000? You could say that's what they normally do. We're not ready. You're not ready. And why are we spending $1.7 million to be a part of a conference center, convention center? You can sugarcoat it and say whatever you want. Why these particular companies? Why these companies and not the rest of the citizens and business owners in Paramore?
10 seconds.
So stop the corporate welfare. It needs to stop. Have a blessed day.
Okay, that's all the, uh, public testimony cards that I have. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm gonna make the motion, but I'm gonna also come back and make a few comments.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Okay, Commissioner Lyman, it would be appropriate for comments at this point.
You know, the amazing thing I hear every week, I'm here, I've been here 15 and a half years, Ms. Gelsor's never called my office. She's never asked me anything. She's never sat down and talked to me. She's never requested a meeting. So I don't know why this thing comes up every four years, ranting and raving. But I think, um, a couple of things I want to comment on was, the first gentleman talked about Cleveland. I know Cleveland. I've gone on Euclid and worked with them, seen how they've redone some things in Cleveland. And along that, that area, similar to us, they really use it for hospitals, two, two major hospitals, two major garages, um, the, the, the bus, uh, BRT and the train. Uh, I've done that, like, two years with Comptel Mayor when I've gone there. And the one thing I like to do when I go into a city, like we talked this morning, is to walk the city as much as I can. I walk my city, my district, all the time. So I often do that, so I can come back and talk about just these kinds of things. Um, the other is, um, I think if someone wants to know if their land is contaminated, they will hire an engineer to test it. Um, and I'm sure if there's something under that gas station there, the city is not gonna clean it up. It's gonna be to the developer. They're gonna do their demolition. They're gonna do all they do, as we did in Baldwin Park. We sold Baldwin Park, and I don't like the cost of this either, but we sold Baldwin Park, if you all can remember, cheap. And we were, uh, boy, we, the people tore into us forever. But we knew that there was a lot of contamination at the golf course. We had lots of demolition. We had a mountain out there, the first in Florida ever, for years, um, with the demolition. But that was the cost of developing Baldwin Park. And now we have tax dollars that come in that we would have had zero in, if you remember, and no one remembers, it was the Navy base. So, um, and I would have been glad to have a conversation with, uh, anyone regarding these things and why we do it. I read the two appraisals also regarding the sale. I didn't like that cost, but, um, I liked it when we bought the other property for the same amount, when we made our purchase. So I'm like, ooh, we oughta sell this higher. Well, the market calls for what the market calls for. And I do have, um, uh, real concerns about the rental. I wish we didn't. I have real concerns about the conference center and the days we're gonna have at the conference center. But I know we've got a lot of more agreements to do in the next six to eight months. I'm gonna get more than six days. Don't bring anything back and want me to support it with less than, uh, with less than 10. Well, but whatever we got, that's six. You gotta do better. But, um, I think, uh, I wanted to vote against this at one point, but as Mayor Dyer says, the need exceeds my disagreement, um, over these issues. The rental costs, I just think there shouldn't have been one, but I, um, I understand it. I also understand, and let me answer this one, regarding infrastructure in Paramore. When I was elected in 1998, the city had put $40 million in infrastructure in Paramore. I used to come to council and say, "I never saw it." Well, you don't ever see infrastructure. Usually it's underground, it's the drainage, it's all these other things. And it was there. And we do take, we do have good infrastructure. Maybe we have not kept the community the way some people wanted it to be, but it hasn't happened that way. When people sell their land and they rent it at a very low cost, get lots of damage, and it's very, very painful. But when you don't own the property, it's, that's the way it goes. So rather than pushing a rope every time I come to council, I try to look for the best benefit for the community. That's in terms of jobs and opportunities, in terms of preserving what can be preserved. Do what we can do instead of ranting and raving. Um, it just makes no sense for me. I voted, I made the motion, I understand it. Tonight, we're gonna have a meeting regarding Central Street Drainage, so that the BRT will be able to, uh, use that street to, to, uh, get along, because it can't, it can't, uh, really, it doesn't have the capacity for it. So there are so many issues when we sit down, that to come up and pick one little something you don't know anything about, or unpoquito, just a little bit about, it seems as though you may be knowledgeable. But I have been free to talk to any citizen in my district. Counsel, understand, I have 41,000 people in my district. Some of you may have significantly more. So why do you see one person all the time out of 41,000? Because the other 40,000 call me, and they're not into this foolishness. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gray? Uh, thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I, I was critical of the conference center, but I do wanna be clear, 'cause some of my constituents have called me about my position specifically on this. And I wanna publicly say I support it. Uh, and the reason I do is a couple of things. Number one, I think this is a very logical extension for the Orlando Magic operation. Uh, with the new arena, they now practice there. Uh, that's where their games are, of course. It's logical for them. They are the, the most logical user for this. So the, the notion that they wanna buy it from us, uh, and, and move what is now not on taxpayer role to a taxpayer situation, uh, I, I like. Let's talk about the appraisal for a bit. Um, you know, one of the areas we're very careful of is making sure we justify prices we pay, and as well as prices we sell. And I've looked at the appraisal, and I'm in the real estate business. Is, is an appraisal an exact science? Absolutely not. But they list five, uh, plus or minus comparables. Uh, and those seem reasonable to me with adjustments, giving location, et cetera. Uh, and I guess the test for me was, this number that we're selling is very comparable to the price we paid for the soccer land. Um, so we, we bought it at one price, and we're selling it about the price two blocks away. That seems reasonable to me. Uh, and the last thing I wanna say, 'cause we heard it in the past, um, it, it's logical to say, boy, if the, if the Magic buy this and make a lot of money, we should share. Uh, and I understand that, but I, I wanna caution folks. It works both ways. If people are gonna invest their money, they deserve the upside, 'cause guess what? They're gonna get the downside if it doesn't work. And talking to somebody that's been in the real estate business, it's not always up. It, sometimes it's down. So, um, I'm very cautious as a custodian of taxpayer money, that before I wanna take a profits interest, I better be sure I'm gonna take a loss interest, because you can't ask folks to share the upside if you're not gonna share the downside. And I don't think that's a position we wanna get in. So, um, Mayor, that's, that's a quick comment on those things. But, uh, one more thing I wanted to say real quick, 'cause I, I put it down, 'cause I did ask about the environmental status, 'cause we do know that there's a, um, a refueling station for the, for OPD. And, um, I understand we have done not only a Phase 1 study, which is kind of a, a very tertiary look at, at there, and certainly when you see a fuel cell, you, you need to do more, uh, testing. We've gone to a Phase 2, which indicated that there is no contamination. However, I'm confident, um, and I will support it here, uh, that I will make sure that if we do, uh, find out that there is some contamination there, we will negotiate that one side or the other will pick up the tab for that, and we'll adjust the price accordingly. Uh, but my understanding is, that will come with the purchaser's obligation to clean that up. And, uh, if we find anything, we will deal with that. But that's to be determined down the road. So, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, two quick items. One, as somebody mentioned, that, why the Magic? Well, the bit was open. The Magic came up to the table, and that's as simple as that. Nobody else came in. And the second thing, I'm tired of hearing people pointing the finger at the Magic, uh, for being whatever, monopolistic or whatnot. The Magic is an institution that helped this city in many, many, many ways. And one of the most important ways they have is with our kids, and they do it every day. I see it at my centers, at the Englewood Center, which is one of the busiest, at the Dorisure Center, which is another one of the busiest. And when I see those kids being taken care of, especially kids that cannot afford to be out there, to, to pay for programs, and the Magic come up to the plate, and they say, "Here we are to help you guys." Stop pointing the fingers if you don't know what's going on in the city of Orlando. Enough, enough of that, okay? If you wanna learn about what's going on, come and see us. Stop coming and, and pulling out of your sleeve and, and saying things in public just to make a, to make a, some sort of a, of statement, just to benefit yourself. You come out and talk to us, and we'll show you what the Magics do for the, for the city of Orlando. This is preposterous. I mean, when are we gonna stop pointing the fingers? Because somebody seems, as a millionaire company, well, you know, they work hard, and they get, uh, they get a lot of people working to. And that's enough, you know? Let's help each other. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Further discussion, hearing none. I'll say the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries unanimously. I got you there, Commissioner Ings.
[inaudible]
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Okay, thank you. So that passed 7-0. Let's, uh, let's move back and do the CRA, since that has the same agreement on it. Let's recess the City Council meeting. We'll convene the CRA meeting without objection. Uh, let's move to item one, which is meeting minutes. Is there a motion on this?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. All right, number two, the September 23rd meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. All right, meeting minutes from the Advisory Board of September 25th. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lyman. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. All right, number two, the September 23rd meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lyman, second by Commissioner Sheehan. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. All right, meeting minutes from the Advisory Board of September 25th. Is there a motion to accept those minutes?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lyman. On favor of the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. All right, number two, the September 23rd meeting minutes.
Okay, Byron, you wanna give us a, uh, so the county passed the interlocal, the amendments to the interlocal agreement that we passed at our last council meeting, but they added a couple of, uh, additional conditions preceded to the agreement. And Byron, you wanna run through, I guess there were what, three of them?
Absolutely. Real quick, Mayor. As you see and as you know, the city of Orlando, the city council approved the third amendment to the interlocal, Orange County interlocal agreement on October seventh, when it went to the county commission on October twenty-second. Uh, it was approved with, uh, called two additional subsections to the conditions precedent, uh, before the issuance of the amount of soccer or, uh, some related debt financing. Those two subsections, six point one, six point fourteen point fourteen, is agreement between the soccer team and the county, and six point fourteen point fifteen is agreement between the city and the county. I'm going low tech here, uh, be quick. So six point fourteen point fourteen, as you see, I stipulate those, uh, those four items that were discussed. It's agreement between the soccer team, will be an agreement between the soccer team and the county for the soccer team to pay two hundred thousand dollars per year for the fifteen years to assist with the operation of fields, uh, soccer fields. Uh, it talks about youth soccer outreach, the team assisting the county with youth soccer outreach to get more, uh, kids involved with youth programming, scholarship for those underprivileged kids to participate in those youth soccer programs. And, uh, to expand the, the recreational, this is like beginner's soccer program. And then the, uh, portion that pertains to the city of Orlando and Orange County is six point fourteen point fifteen, which says that prior to the issuance, the city and the county, uh, will enter into an agreement to provide for, uh, the use of the soccer stadium for one public purpose or charitable event per year, uh, by each commissioners with payment of any use fees, without payment, I'm sorry, of any use fees. That would be a separate agreement that, this is stipulate that, but the actual agreement, we will, uh, work on that, negotiate it over the next, uh, several weeks or month or so. We'll come back, uh, to the city council, uh, with an agreement that we then will, uh, present to Orange County after approval by the city council. And that will stipulate the specific, um, terms upon which that, uh, soccer stadium of, uh, availability will be, uh, provided.
And just to clarify that, we're waiving the rental fee or the use fee. We're not raising, waiving the other associated expenses with any of that.
Absolutely. And that will be made clear in the actual agreement. That talks about expenses, booking, what our policies and procedures are in place. In fact, rather than try to capture all of that, the intent, uh, that Joe DeLittford and I have talked about is, is making more reference to our existing, uh, booking policies and procedures, uh, that the venues has in place for our facilities.
Okay, is this set up that we need to adopt these as amendments to the third amendment? Or is it set up just to vote on this issue?
I believe that you, well...
Set up for votes, uh, may or may be for adopting the third amendment and adopting the amendment restated in Orlando.
So what we wanna do is go ahead and adopt these amendments to the third amendment and then vote on the third amendment as amended?
I think, I think it's set up so you can really take one vote. Uh, one vote is, will encompass...
Everything.
These, yes, these additional items in both places. Both an amendment that includes them and then the amended and restated interlocal agreement that will include the whole.
Okay, then having been assured by council that we just need a motion to approve these amendments in whatever form they may be, how about if we get that motion out there?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. Okay, Commissioner Sheehan, then Commissioner Stewart.
Well, Mayor, first of all, I'd like to say this is amazing that we got all this, um, this together and, and, and got the county to agree. Um, I am a little bit concerned about some of this, which I think it's a little bit of extortion, but, um, the bottom line is, we had to do it to get their support. I think they should be respecting the tourism industry because it's their funds that they want used to build venues that will promote tourism. And they shouldn't, I, I don't think it's up to us and local government to try to exhort and exact, you know, funding from that. I don't think that's fair, but if that's what those sort of terms are and that's what was agreed to, it is what it is. I think we should be doing good public policy, not trying to figure out ways to, um, to skim off the top, so to speak. But, um, but Mayor Dyer, um, your leadership on this has been amazing. I know this has not been a very difficult restructuring of this, of this deal, and I wanna thank you for your leadership on this because, um, we are gonna have some of those amazing facilities in downtown Orlando because of your leadership, and I just wanted to thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, um, and thank you, Commissioner Sheehan, for saying the word extortion. Um, I didn't wanna be the first one to say it. Um, the, um, I am deeply concerned about, um, an idea in which we are compelled to make money on a venue and then we're told to give the venue away. Uh, it bothers me, we did it on several occasions on other types of things throughout the city, and I just wanna tell you, I think it's wrong. It's wrong public policy. Um, but, um, uh, we're in a position where we really don't have any other choice. I don't like being in that position for that. Mayor, I appreciate your incredible level of patience and understanding at the meeting. Um, I'm not sure that any of us would have had the same level of, um, calmness that you portrayed at the meeting. Uh, and I appreciate you doing that for us, because I think all of us would've gone out and done something different. But, um, I, I've shared with, um, with Alan and with, uh, Byron, the, my concern is, is a, uh, a future policy that does not compromise both the political as well as the actual operation of this. Um, we have talked briefly about having ample time to place a rental agreement in there. What I don't want is, I don't want somebody showing up on the Orlando Sentinel, uh, one week out saying, uh, you know, I, I get, I get one a year and I wanna do something next week. And our answer is, nope, sorry, you know, you've, you got, we have a process and procedure that you've agreed to, and if you don't like it, then I'm sorry. Um, and, um, and I also don't want somebody at the same time reserving space well in advance to take it away from something else, um, and then blaming it back on the city of Orlando. We, we are compelled to go and use that, um, uh, that property to make money and to cover its expenses, especially in the enterprise fund. So it, uh, it does concern me that that would be a, um, a requirement here. Um, I, um, I, I hope that our policies will make sure that there's available when it's available at a time where it's not being actually rented by somebody else to provide that level of, uh, support. Um, and, um, so with that, I, I'm, I, I agree with, um, with Commissioner Sheehan. Uh, this, this is a very difficult, um, negotiation because it's not the same people we talked about, we talked with four or five, four or five years ago, because we, uh, knew, and that's the issue that I'd look at in the future. Uh, I'm less concerned about renting this next week. I'm concerned about the terms and conditions for renting in the year twenty twenty, the year twenty twenty-six, and the year twenty thirty, when we don't know who's gonna be on this council nor who is gonna be on, um, on the Orange County Commission. So that's a concern, so I wanna make sure those things are put to bed as soon as possible. And I think that you've got my support to help move that forward.
Absolutely. And as I mentioned, the agreement that comes forward, I think will, you, you'll be very, a little more comfortable when you see the actual language that we anticipate. As well as I will, I'll remind you, the way the arrangement is structured with Orlando City Soccer, they carry, uh, the risk, uh, so to speak, of, of, of the operating costs the way that's structured. That is another means in which the city is protected on the downside of the operating cost for the new stadium.
Right. Thank you very much.
Further comment? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Just wanna mention one other thing. Um, there was a proposed additional amendment that Commissioner Clark offered related to, uh, joint cooperation between the city and the county on the development of additional park space, potentially soccer fields at Farber Park. And, uh, I just verbally, I'd already told, uh, the mayor as well as the commissioner that the city certainly, since we own property that is adjacent to both the school and their current existing park, wanted to partner with them in whatever form that may eventually take, um, using our land to enhance the park facilities they have there that can be used both by city residents and county residents. We don't have exactly how that might work, but I made that offer to them that we wanted to work together with them. Okay, um, okay, so we have, the last item is the conference...
Did we vote on it?
Did we? No. We had the motion. We didn't...
I thought we, yeah, we voted on it.
Commissioner Ings made the statement.
Motion first and second, and two discussions we haven't voted yet.
I think we did. We did, 'cause I came back after we voted. But let's vote again.
Let's vote again.
All, no, we're belt suspenders. Let's vote again. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so the motion carries again. Okay, so the last item for the CRA is the same conference center funding agreement that we had on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Move approval, second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so that's six one, same vote is on the consent agenda. Any further business come for the CRA? Thomas?
There's none.
All right, then the CRA is adjourned. We will reconvene the city council meeting. No, we won't. We'll convene the neighborhood improvement district meeting without objection, and all we have is accepting meeting minutes from the advisory councils. Is there a motion to accept those meeting minutes?
No.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Linum. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll re, let's see, adjourn the neighborhood improvement district, reconvene the city council meeting. That brings us to new business on approving the third amendment to the interlocal agreement and amended, restated interlocal agreement related to community venues, which is the same item we just voted on on the, as the CRA. Is there a motion to approve that?
Move approval, second.
Motion by Commissioner Linum, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Let's move, let's make Atlanta do a little work now. So let's move to hearings. Ordinance is second reading number one, Madam Clark.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida relating to pain management clinics, amending the city's land development code to define pain, pain management clinics. Prohibiting pain management clinics in all zoning districts except the industrial general district. Prohibiting pain management clinics as accessory uses in home occupations and prohibiting such clinics within certain distances of certain other land uses and identified transportation corridors. Providing minimum site planning conditions for pain management clinics. Providing for severability, codification, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Motion by Commissioner Ortiz. I'll take yours as a second. Commissioner Sheehan.
I'll hear Commissioner Ings too.
Yeah, at the first reading, Commissioner Ings recommended an amendment to this ordinance. Commissioner, would you like to move your amendment at this time?
And, Mayor, I will amend it on the volume four, two thousand thirteen and two thousand three, and add volume two, road segment, section fifty-eight, seven hundred and one nine four, oppose land development code amendment. This, uh, section, road segment, pain management clinic, then, uh, located within five hundred two dollars, uh, first, the Biden Road between the Fox Road and Conroy Road, and second, the St. Black Road between Universal Boulevard and Kingsport Park. Also, the lane, section five eight, one hundred and nine five, have these, as a material of the public land code amendment, prohibited signs of windows at pain management clinics. No, this section relates to the name, if you need the requirements besides the pain management clinic.
Okay. Commissioner Ings has moved the amendment as stated, second by Commissioner Linum. Is there a discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor of the amendment indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So the amendment carries. Now we're back on the ordinance as amended. Uh, is there a discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so.
Mayor, isn't this one that needs a five oh one hearing vote?
What's that? I'll do that after, though.
I can move that thing.
I can do that after, right?
Yeah. Do we have the second hearing?
Yeah.
This is the second hearing, Mayor, so I think the second hearing has to be delayed until a date certain for, or needs to be heard at five oh one.
The action was to take the amendment, but then defer...
Oh, we had to defer because of the five o'clock thing?
Okay.
Okay.
I just wanna hang around all day today.
Need a motion to move that to the next?
Let's see. I wish I had read my script all the way down. Commissioners, this ordinance requires a public hearing after five o'clock unless we vote by supermajority to hold the second public hearing at our normal city council meeting time. Staff recommends that we hold the second public hearing at a regularly scheduled city council meeting at two o'clock on November twenty-fifth. So what we will do is, we will defer the item. Do I have a motion to hear it at...
The regular city council.
Regular city council meeting at two o'clock.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So the motion ha, or the ordinance has been amended by Commissioner Ings' amendment. We will defer, um, further, um, action until November twenty-fifth, but it will be heard at our two o'clock meeting. Okay, everybody good?
Yeah. Mayor, let me ask one quick question. Is it possible to get the amendments actually added back into this motion when it, when it comes back to us?
Yeah, well, we'll rewrite the ordinance to have the...
Include that at that time?
To include it.
Yes, sir. And Mayor, could the minutes reflect that that was a supermajority vote?
Yep, that was a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Seven, okay.
Okay, number two, Madam Clark.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan to redesignate parcel D one C in the millennia development of regional impact, generally located to the east of Millenia Boulevard between Conroy Road and Millenia Plaza Way, comprised of two-point acres, more or less, from office medium intensity to urban activity center on the city's official future land use maps. Rezoning the same land from O two to AC two on the city's official zoning maps. Providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. We have a request by the applicant for this item also to be deferred until the November twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, meeting, and staff recommends that we do so. Do I have a motion to defer the final hearing and vote on this ordinance to the twenty-fifth? Motion by Commissioner Sheehan, second by Commissioner Stewart. All in favor, the motion to defer indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, number three, Madam Clark.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the city's adopted growth management plan by amending the city's future land use map designation from residential low intensity to community activity center for certain real property with an address of eight hundred West Smith Street, generally located north of West Princeton Street, south of West Smith Street, east of Northwest Moreland Drive, and west of Edgewater Drive, comprised of point one five acres, more or less. Changing the zoning classification from R one T W S P A R to AC one T P, T W S P A R for the same real property, directing amendment of the city's official future land use and zoning maps, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Wow, Atlanta, you must've been reading in a really boring fashion. Everybody got a good laugh.
I feel really badly.
I think they don't care about District Three. I think that was the problem. They care about District Four. They don't care about District Three.
All right.
I got one left.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this? Discussion among commissioners, hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number four, Madam Clark. Number four, Madam Clark.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida, vacating, closing, and abandoning portion of Eldridge Street and Ruby Street, generally located between Beach Boulevard and Josephine Street. Providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Stewart, second by Commissioner Sheehan. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Down to first reads, Madam Clark, number one.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Orlando, Florida, annexing to the corporate limits of the city of Orlando, Florida, certain real property generally located north of the Osceola County boundary, south of Clap Sims Duda Road, east of Narcisse Road, and west of the Split Oak Forest, comprised of two hundred and eleven acres, more or less. Providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Gray, second by Commissioner Ortiz. Is there anyone from the public that would like to testify on this matter? Discussion among commissioners. Hearing none, all in favor, the motion indicates so by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Number two, Madam Clark.
An ordinance of the city of Orlando, Florida, amending the planned development zoning district regulations for certain real property generally located north of West Oak Ridge Road, south of Interstate Highway Four, east of the Florida Turnpike and west of Millenia Boulevard, comprised of seventy-three point five acres, more or less, of which three point eight acres is conservation. Amending and restating the planned development district's development program, allowable uses, site plan, and conditions of development. Directing amendment of the official zoning map series, providing for severability, correction of scrivener's errors, and an effective date.